Michael, you're on my screen. Can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
I can't hear you.
How's this?
I don't know if that was me or you.
Okay, can you?
You can hear me. I can hear you.
Oh, good. Okay.
Solid.
And I got the site plan.
Good, good. Did you look at it?
Briefly.
Yeah.
And I did have a conversation with Becky and Grace, and I suggested that sometime this summer, if you and me and Carrie and Grace wanted to gather together, we could figure out how to move things out of the conference room downstairs in some organized manner.
Right, and we we might want to grab Linda before she's gone.
Oh, that would actually be better than Grace. I was trying to get someone who had a sense, but you're right, Linda would be much better.
I mean, I didn't like that that email from Becky.
Oh, the one asking for people to?
Advertising the position.
Yeah, it's quite disheartening.
Yeah, that was my take.
Hey, everybody.
Hi.
Hi, Jeff.
Hey, Jeff. Welcome. Howdy. We're gonna have to start saying L and W for clarity.
It looks like we have it looks like we have a quorum. I'll call a meeting to order. This is good. I think the first thing to do is to welcome Jeff Weston. This is it's good to have a new member.
Welcome, Jeff.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah. So what do you do when you're not at the planning board?
He muted.
He mutes himself.
Well, there we go. Okay.
I'm not sure he's muted.
Well, he's not muted during Zoom, but I think on his end, he might be not microphoneed or something.
Something's going on with his audio, yeah.
Lips are moving.
Yeah, Jeff, your lips are moving, but we can't hear you.
Okay. Logging off, coming back.
Oh. Now he shows to be muted. Now he's off.
Okay, well. Well, perhaps we can get back to welcoming him later.
Well. I'm happy. Oh, no. Yeah, I'm happy to nominate Deacon as Chair of the Planning Board for his one remaining year.
Oh, no.
I'll second that if that's what we're doing right now.
That's the next thing on the agenda.
It is. It is.
Moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded.
What a conspiracy.
It's good to be popular, but I'm just fearful about, you know, oncoming dementia and stuff like that. I mean, I am getting old.
You said you have one more year, right?
Well, that's not the issue. I don't I didn't plan to leave the the planning board, but I did want to I did want to cut back.
Deacon, as I reminded you today, my father was Chair of a planning board until he was almost 80.
Yeah, I know. And yeah, and you did beat me down.
I did.
So does anybody want to say anything more on this unfortunate topic?
Well, I will. I will. Well. Yeah, I mean, I think you gave us a year's notice so we can sort of, you know, work with that. So I think it's I would just say your message has been received and we can figure out what the point of action is between now and, you know, next spring.
But Deacon, just to be clear, you have my vote of confidence if you wish to continue. Well, I've succumbed to Jeff.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Wonderful.
Okay, well, let's let's finish this chair stuff. Does anybody else want to say anything? I'll call the roll. Jeff? Oh. This is confusing.
Here.
No, no, they're still Jeff's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's the confusion. And so, so Jeff Weston, are you an eye or a nay on on the chair?
I'm sure. I don't know exactly what the question was. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so let's let's
Let him go ask.
Let's get Weston up to speed here. Our number one.
Let's just continue the discussion and then we'll and then I'll call the roll.
Go, Nathan. It's been moved and seconded that Deacon remain the Chair for at least another year for continuity purposes during these unsettled times. And so that's the motion on the floor. And it's so that's what we're voting on to keep Deacon in the Chair's seat for at least another year.
And Deacon, if I may, maybe we'll just do the roll and have Jeff Weston be the last person.
Okay, okay. Well, I'll call on Jeff Lacy then.
Hi.
Okay, Steve.
Hi.
Nathan.
Hi.
Michael.
Who's the ask, like, we, I?
Uh. Is there anybody I've missed besides myself?
Jeff Weston.
Jeff Weston.
Hi, thank you.
Okay, and I'll abstain, but I think it carries. Thank you.
Mandate.
Groundswell of support.
You can rule with impunity now.
Yeah, yeah, I'll continue my hard ass moderation. So Jeff Weston, we were we were going to welcome you. And we were interested in what your life was like outside the planning board.
Well, thank you for asking. I'm very happy to be here. I've actually taught. I've been a high school, high school and middle school science teacher for 37 years, and now I am happily retired. And I live with my wife, who's 66, a retired psychotherapist, and I've got two grown kids that are doing well, and I live in Schutzbury, and life is great. So I'm just enjoying myself since I've been retired from teaching. But thank you for asking. I'm very excited to be part of the planning board. I've really enjoyed my time. I've spent a little time at the town meeting with Michael, and I really enjoyed that time together and am looking forward to serving the town. So glad to be here.
Great. Jeff, do you have any idea what you're getting yourself involved with?
They will tell you.
I will tell you.
I actually I do have some idea. I majored in biology, so I have a good background in ecology and, you know, and the things that are necessary to maintain water quality in a town that gets its water through natural filtration through the soil. I know a lot about community ecology, and I really care about the environment. So I'm very happy to include my knowledge and and learn also from from all of you. So thank you so much.
Great, great. This is good. Well, let's move on to public comment. Is is there someone here who's going to need to leave or wants to talk about something that's not on the agenda?
Yes, sorry. I just had a quick question. I didn't know which board meeting to show up to, but I wanted to talk about I own the property.
Please identify yourself.
This is Ryan Zavrua, and I own or I'm one of the owners of the property next to the dam on Lake Wyola. And just wanted to discuss, you know, how we're controlling access to that right now. We recently did a survey and access to the dam is going across our property. So what meeting is the right meeting to discuss that? Is it this one?
Looks like Jeff has an answer.
It would probably be the Lake Wyola Advisory Committee that meets at some regularity, and I believe is responsible to the select board about lake affairs. So Lake Wyola Advisory Committee, LWAC.
Okay, I will try to drop into that meeting. Is there any of the other board meetings that might be of interest if they're not meeting for a while?
I would suggest that that you contact the town administrator. If this is an access and trespass and that kind of an issue, make the town administrator aware, and she'll probably direct you in the LWAC direction, but she may have other ideas.
Miriam had a suggestion too. I don't know if Jeff told us, say what you're gonna say.
I was gonna say that you could talk to the police if people are trespassing on your property. I know there's been a lot of discussion about trying to post to keep people off the dam because it's dangerous. And sometimes there are children who are being unsupervised are on the dam. But if they're trespassing, that might be a conversation that the police.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I just kind of wanted to give people a heads up of I don't want to just block access. I think people can go around the other way, not across our property. But I didn't want to just put up, you know, a string and a no trespassing sign without warning people. So, okay.
Carrie has something.
Hi, Ryan. Do you mind spelling your last name for me? I'm doing the minutes. I just want to make sure.
It's Z as in zebra, A V as in Victor, E R U H A.
Thank you. And do you mind if I have your address as well?
Sure, it's 387 Lockspond Road.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so Miriam, you were saying just with the survey that we have, if I just talk directly to the police on duty and just let them know, we don't want people going across there anymore. Everyone is okay with that?
I know a couple of years ago, there was a discussion of posting signs on the dam for safety purposes, and the police were part of that conversation. I think the recently retired fire chief was also part of that conversation. So I think if, you know, to follow up on what Miriam said, if you contact the police and sort of tell them what, you know, where you're at and what the story is and just sort of see how they want to proceed, they could probably advise you.
Fun fact, fun fact, but on the deed to the dam, it belongs to the Conservation Commission.
Oh, really?
But LWAC is usually the place for setting policies around the dam and maintaining the dam.
Okay, and they're gonna have a meeting this summer at some point, hopefully.
They meet once a month. Mark Rivers is the Chair. You could reach out. You put, do you know Mark? He's on your road, right?
Yeah, I, okay, yeah, I know Mark.
If you want to send me an email or send an email to Concom, I can, you know, pass the message on to, if you want.
Okay. Great, that gives me a direction to go. I appreciate the input.
Here. So is there any other public comment? Hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's Ashley.
Ashley.
Yeah. I just wanted, I don't even know if I should say this, but I don't love having my camera off, but I have a lot going on over here. So I just want to let you all know I'm here. I'm listening. And if my camera's off, that doesn't mean I'm not here. Okay, I'm gonna be here for the duration. I'm in between like leaving early in the morning and getting back yesterday. So I will be here just I'm gonna have my camera off for a lot of it. You don't need to get motion sick from watching me move around.
Happy summer vacation.
Yeah, thank you. I love summer vacation. Thank God. All right, and welcome, Jeff. I'm an associate member. And I'm also a high school teacher. So nice to meet you. I admire your retirement. All right.
Okay, so so let's move on to calls A and R. There we go.
Okay, can everyone see that? Okay?
Yeah.
So make it smaller.
Now, now it's okay, I guess.
Yeah, it's got the it's got a lever road on it now. That's good. So
Is there somebody here that can control the cursor and move it around and explain what's going on?
I can I can explain what's going on. I can't move the cursor. I went to Town Hall to look at to look at this map. That it makes reference to it makes reference to the fact that the parcel is intended to be sold to the inhabitants of the town of Schutzbury. So I saw that. I brought Becky into the conference room. We had a conversation. This this lot is in is intended to be traded by Coles for some set of small parcels at Lake Wyola that the town has taken for taxes. The town has for quite a long time wanted to get this piece of property because it was seen as a piece that could be used to to site a well to take care of the the to take care of the well that has been salted by the Highway Department on on the west side of the Highway Department property. Apparently, Al Warner has thought this is a pretty good place to drill a well. Did it it it's higher ground. It's not likely to be to be impacted by the salt from the from the Highway Department. Over the 12 year course of of this negotiation, the town has found another solution to to the salted well west of the Highway Department. They've run a they've run a pipe to to water across the street. But they still wanted they still want to get this piece. I think the only thing that this that that this plan does is is create the the right of way that goes that goes through it. So that Coles will still be able to 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 move timber out through this piece of property after it's sold to the town. So I don't.
So the remaining area stays with Coles, remaining 32?
No, the town the town would get the the town would get the whole parcel.
Well, it looks like
Not the backland.
It looks like the right of way just starts at the end of the remaining area. Isn't that what?
Yeah, yeah, right. You're right. Which which end of the remaining area? What are you talking about?
Remaining land of WD Coles. That's that's the writer most piece there.
Yeah. The 32 acre piece.
Right, so they keep that, and then the town gets Lot 1, 8.8 acres. So then there's this right of way established through there for Coles to get through it.
Yeah, the from what I remember from since it was a 12 year conversation, I was on the select board for some of this. And the issue was, I guess I had control. I think this is it's somewhere back in here is where they want a well could be dug. And so just getting back in there was the key.
Yeah.
So Coles would keep this.
Okay. So 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 what did they do? They did some monkey business up in the in the front to to get a place to punch out onto the road?
I well, I'm a little confused, like in this easement area here. I'm not quite sure. I guess the town would own own this, and it's a right of way for Coles. I didn't talk to Becky about this, so I'm not quite sure. But it seems like you see this roadway thing here?
Yeah.
So that's the access off the lever road that they want, because you have to be able to bring in a, you know, the truck to do the drilling. So I think the idea was to get off a lever road, be able to come in here, and you could get as far as here. But unless you have Lot 1, you couldn't get farther back. So I think I think the land that would be drilled is somewhere back in here, if I remember correctly.
I think I think where they want to drill is 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 to the west of the right of way.
Over here.
No.
Over here.
Behind behind Holzberg Trust.
Over here.
Yeah, over there, right.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was thinking. Yeah.
Well, okay, but they don't have to do that anymore because they already got well water from across the road, right?
Right, right.
So so now what the town is doing is taking a chunk of its highway garage land, and that building up there on the top and the other building and that building up there on the top, and the other building is the salt shed, that's the highway department. So. So it's, it's constructing this right-of-way just to the right of the salt shed, somewhere through there, so Coles can get through. And then the town will, will have the land.
Well, I think the right-of-way, I think the right-of-way is here. And the, the issue is, if I remember correctly, we might even have voted, this is town meeting, but there was, I think, that in terms of taking the land up at Lake Wyola, that was sort of the swap. There was land that the town took possession of because of lack of taxes, and Coles took that small parcel and in return, the town would get this, so it was.
So.
Could I ask a question?
Please.
There was an RDA with the highway department last summer with the Conservation Commission.
What's an RDA?
It was a permit to do some paving of the parking area at the highway department. And the area where that access road is, is a wetland. It's a bordering vegetated wetland. So I'm a little curious about what improvements were being proposed for this access road and whether they would require a Concom permit.
I guess I have a suggestion, observation, since none of us have the full story, and there's no one here, sort of as the proponent advocating.
Probably my fault, because I, I, I probably didn't understand this clearly enough. I thought, I thought that this was a relatively simple thing.
It could be. It seems like we can just, should invite Becky to come and present for the town next meeting.
Well, the problem is, if, if this is indeed an A and R plan, and somebody submitted it and paid a, a fee, we only have twenty-one days to act before it's approved, whether, whether or without it. So Deacon, where are we, how are we doing on the time clock?
Well, we're, we're way past that.
Yeah, if you look down here, it says December twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one.
Well, was it actually submitted?
I believe it was submitted at, at the, at the very end of May. And I didn't find out about it until, until just after our last meeting.
So, so based, based on what Jeff's saying, is this a done deal then?
Well, yeah, it's a done deal if they go to the, if they take this plan to the town clerk and say it was submitted to the planning board in, in, in May, and they didn't do anything with it. Twenty-one days elapsed, it's approved.
So then all we can do is understand what's going on. We have no real say in it from what, based on what you said, Jeff, right?
Considering that it's, it's not a, a new plan, it's an old plan, it's probably approved already. I mean, they, they have to, they have to actively go and take it to the town clerk and say, hey, the planning board didn't sign off on this in a timely manner. And then the town clerk then verifies that, and they can take it to the registry.
Well, I can say, I talked to Grace today when I went to take pictures of this thing and asked her, I was trying to locate it, because there was a lot of different plans on the, on the conference room table. It didn't seem like she was aware of this, so she might know it in a different context, but at least as a rolled-up piece of paper that I took a picture of, she was not aware of it.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it sounds like what happened was a landlocked piece of, of property. That includes the remaining area. And, and the Lot One was connected to the road by the town dating over this upper rectangle here, right next to the town garage. And, and, and grafting it onto this other land, which gives them access to the road. And what that does is though, it, 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 it creates a parcel that doesn't have adequate frontage. So.
It's not, it's not a buildable lot, basically.
Well, it would probably have to be stated that someplace on it, that it's not a building lot. I don't know, does it state, take that anywhere?
It's, it's adequate frontage for just a right-of-way.
Well, the interesting quirk is that the town of Schutzbury has no frontage requirement. Our zoning lets the town off the frontage, so this would actually be a buildable, usable piece for the town. It's, it's a little conundrum for us, though, because that's what we make our decision on. Does it have two hundred and fifty feet of frontage? You know, is it on a proper way? That's, that's, that's fine, and does it have access? Vital access. If there, if it's nothing but wetlands up there, or if it's a cliff or something, then they don't have access.
Miriam, could you tell us where the, roughly where the wetlands is based on this?
Yes. Yes. Well, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, well, you can't see where my cursor is.
No, just describe it.
You see where the salt shed is and that outbuilding?
Yeah.
Okay, so where you see the crosshatched area?
Yep.
And the layout of this woods road, that's exactly where the wetland is. And my recollection, my recollection was that it was, oh man, the salt shed was maybe thirty-five feet from the wetland, forty feet. I'd have to go back and look at my notes, but it was close.
So if they put a road, a road or, or an access road in, they would have to come before the Concom?
Well, that's what I'm concerned about, is that they're thinking that they have, you know, if all of this deal was contingent upon that, but they didn't consider whether they would need a notice of intent. Because, you know, it would be a significant change to the wetland. It isn't even, but we're not talking about buffer zone. We're talking about working directly in the resource area.
So if, if Jeff, if this is, as you said, beyond the twenty-one day period that we have any input, then doesn't the Concom still have a, have to sign off on this?
Oh, yeah, and, and all the zoning requirements attached as well.
Wait, does, the Concom signs off on A and Rs?
No, on your stuff, the wet ones.
I mean, they come to us, right?
Right, right, yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah, but the interesting quirk, though, is that this new lot that they've created that has a, a connection to the road of, what is it, seventy-five feet or something?
Yeah, looks like it.
Right, so it, it's way less than the two hundred and fifty that's required. But for the town of Schutzbury, it doesn't matter, because there is no lineal frontage requirement for the town. The town could use this.
If it could build on it, because it's a wet one, so it's unlikely.
Well, they'd have, they'd have to get across it somehow. And, and I guess that's up to them and Coles to figure out.
Does, is anybody here familiar with Lot One? Like, what's on Lot One? Is it forested? Is it? You know, I, I'm not at all familiar with it.
I don't remember from discussions. I, you know, what I would say is rather, since we got big discussion later, since we can't do anything, maybe Deacon should just check in and find out what the set, or with Grace, find out if they actually filed.
Well, they did, they.
Or complain that they filed and they didn't get a response, whatever the.
Did we get a Form A and, and, and a, a payment?
Yes, yes, and I, and I need to check, I mean, yeah, that did happen.
Okay. All right, well, I, I agree. We don't have to belabor it tonight, because probably it's kind of academic.
Yeah.
Looks like Carlos and Carrie have hands up.
Thanks for taking my comment. I am new to this issue, so I have. So my first question is, this is to be offered to the town as payment for taxes that were not paid by Coles, is that correct? Is that?
Not correct.
Not correct, so. But.
That, what, what I have been told is that there's been a, an, a, a long, ongoing negotiation between Coles and the town in which this parcel here would be, would be traded to Coles for a set of parcels at Lake Wyola that the town had taken for taxes.
Okay, so the town has taken some parcels from Coles at Lake Wyola.
No, 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 from somebody else who hasn't paid.
From other folks.
Somebody else, okay, okay. Okay, so I, I, I withdraw my, my question then.
So, so Deacon or Michael, whoever may know more about this, the parcels at Lake Wyola, what are they? Are they developable? Are they, are they vacant building lots that we're now gonna?
I don't know, I, I don't know.
Adrian.
Relevant in this situation, what, 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 what those are.
Well, probably nothing we're saying is relevant, since it's already constructively approved. But I, I'm just curious, because then we're gonna see them at the DBA, I'm just wondering.
Okay, well, I think, I think it, they're parcels that, that Evan Jones wants to add to, to his holdings. I mean, I, I think they're supposed to be near Evan.
Okay.
We looked at one of those sites, Jeff, and we did that site visit down on Lake Drive. You were there for that, right? No, you weren't meeting there. I forget who was at that site visit. I guess it was not the planning board, it was LWAC. There's a parcel that's on Grape Pines Road, or Grape Pines Drive. That's just uphill of Evan Jones's property that I think he wants to incorporate into his property.
Uh huh, okay. Well, if he's, yeah, if he's incorporating it into his existing property, then it probably is not an independent building lot.
Oh, 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 well, Becky said they were, Becky said to me that they were all, that they were small and more than one.
Yeah. Okay.
So I think Carrie wants to say something, and I'll just reiterate that I think we should move on.
Sorry, I was just curious, was this submitted like this May?
Yeah, the date on the, the date on the Form A was, was, was May thirty-one, I believe.
Oh, so like very recent, I don't.
And then right around the time of the last meeting, you sent me an email that there was some, that, that there was something from, from the lawyer in the conference room. And it, you know, it didn't happen last time, but because it, well, things didn't come together in a way they could have.
I just don't remember ever receiving that or ever putting that in the office along with that paper. When I was originally looking through that, is when I found that paper, and I was confused, because I didn't know what it was. And then I never saw this map until right now, so I was just confused on how it got in the office.
Well, right, right. Nothing was done in a timely way, that's the problem.
Carrie, for future reference, if, if we get one of these, it's called an approval not required. It's gonna be a plan, it's gonna have a Form A with it, it's gonna have a fee of probably multiples of seventy dollars. If we get one of these things, then the chairman needs to, to be noticed right away, so that, because we only have twenty-one days to act on them.
Yeah, it's similar to Comcom, but I check the, like, I check the mailboxes, like, every time I go there, that's why I'm confused and why I'm.
Well, I think that, I think what probably happened is Grace, Grace took the Form A and the check and and put the, put the plans in the, in the conference room. I think that's what happened, and, and, you know, the ball got dropped.
Yeah, I.
Okay, well, I agree with Michael. Let's move on, because we've got a lot of discussing to do tonight.
Yeah.
Well, well, look, so, well, let's finish this up a little more. So, I mean, I sent an email to, to Attorney Reedy. I mean, in my ignorance, I said that it, it would, that I didn't see a problem with this. And if, and if one came up during the discussion, I would email him, so. Are we gonna?
Well, Deacon, normally, if somebody tried to connect landlocked land to a road and, and did it without adequate frontage, we could approve it, but we'd have to label that piece of land not a buildable lot on the plan.
Right, right.
So that, that it was clear that they were maybe, maybe gaining access, but they were, they were not gaining buildability. So if, if we were actually acting on this thing, that's probably what we do.
Yeah.
Conversely, since it's going to the town, it doesn't matter, because they don't have a frontage requirement.
Well, well, can we go back to the map for just a second? Because.
Um, hold on, let me share it. Hold on, sorry. My concern about spending so much time on this is that we have not much control over it, but if you get to the solar bylaw, that's like our bailiwick, and it's important. This one seems like it's.
See, see, now, I was thinking, I mean, that, I mean, I was thinking that this narrow rectangular piece that goes out to the road was a separate parcel from the one that was being split to to sell some to the town. Now, am I wrong in that?
I don't think we know enough.
I agree with that, Deacon.
Because.
It, 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 it looks like we've carved off some town land right next to the salt shed to go with this landlocked piece in the back here, in order to connect it to the road. So that Coles can now go from Leverett Road back through here and get to their other land. And in exchange, we get eight point eight acres up front for some reason. So, I don't know, I, I moved that, I moved as the chair, investigate and, and find out all pertinent facts relative to this plan and report back at our next meeting.
Yeah, I would agree. We're just sort of guessing.
So the fact that these are separate, the fact that we're, we're talking about two separate original parcels, I mean, I mean, they're, 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 my understanding is that, that they're create, my current understanding is they're, they're establishing a right-of-way through, through this small parcel that goes out to the road and right-of-way through, through this, through this piece that's gonna be sold to the town. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, from the looks of this plan, it appears as though Coles may already own out to the road.
Yeah, that's what I think.
And the only real division is just the, the section off the front piece from the back piece. So the back piece is thirty-some acres, that stays with Coles. The town gets everything up front, and Coles gets a right-of-way to pass to its backland.
See, see, I, my understanding is that, that the town doesn't get everything up front.
Well, it says to be conveyed to the inhabitants of the town of Schutzbury.
Yeah, but I, I'm thinking that that's on, that that's for a separate parcel from the one that goes out to the road.
It, 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 it's not shown to be two different pieces, it's shown to be a part of one piece.
So, so I have a suggestion. Why don't we just have somebody who's been involved in this from the select board come to the next planning board meeting and walk us through this?
Yeah, I think it's, I think Becky just has to present it to us, and we either act or we don't act, but it's too much waste of time guessing.
Yeah.
It comes up as two parcels on the. It comes up as two parcels on the assessors map.
Okay. That may or may not be updated, so.
Right, I, I, I would say we cease discussion until we have somebody who's knowledgeable about this whole process and that can inform us all about it. Otherwise, we're just kind of using circumstantial evidence to try to figure out what's going on.
Okay, okay.
So I, I made a motion earlier that the chair investigate this with the town administrator and that we.
I don't think we have to vote, just give me.
Michael seconded it.
Yeah, I seconded it, there you go.
Okay.
Okay, does anybody want to talk anymore? I'll, I'll call the roll. Jeff Weston?
That looks like an eye.
Looked like an eye.
I took that as an eye. Okay, okay, Jeff Lacy?
Hi.
Uh, Nathan?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
I'm an I. Did I leave anybody out?
Hey.
Good. Um, uh, let's go on to the minutes. I think the five nine, five nine and five eighteen, we just need to notify Grace.
They've been approved and I have to update them from the, the corrections that might have made. I did one and then I got caught up before I could even get to the second one. I just haven't returned to it yet. I'm going to tomorrow.
Okay, and, and, and six thirteen, I, I have to confess, I mean, I read it enough to know that we needed to do some, some work on it, which we should, which we should schedule, but, but I haven't had time to read it carefully enough to. Yeah.
Me either. Let's do it next meeting.
Okay, and I, but I do think, but we didn't, yes, good. And the Wheelock site visit?
Wheelock work was the, the latest, they've had a number of delays. The latest was they were gonna be starting after the sixth. So it, I, I, I don't know, anybody who live on that road notice anything going on there?
Nothing's going on.
No? Okay. The, the way I left it with him was he was gonna call me after it was done. And then, and then we were gonna get out there, but if too much time passes, I'll have to call him. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was gonna be a week ago Wednesday when it was gonna start, the sixth.
It seems like we should get them going before the end of July, so we can keep them on track at least. Because I think originally we were talking about May, June, and then it got pushed back, so.
Yeah, if, if, if I don't get any word in the next couple of weeks, I'll, I'll be back with Joel.
Great.
And so I'll have something to tell you or a field trip to schedule before the August eighth meeting.
Okay, so we want to discuss this anymore?
No.
Good. And I guess the, I would note, it looks like the community preservation rep business is, is in hand. I mean, I see from the emails that things are happening.
Yeah, I mean, Jake, Jake said he would do it. I presume that he got appointed. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but he said yes to CPC. Mateo is the new CPC chair and he got notified, so I think it's, they can handle it. I think it's in hand.
Yeah. Good, good. Well, okay, let's go to Tracer Lane.
Okay. So you, you want to pick this up, Deacon?
Please.
Okay, so I'll, I'll share the screen in a minute, but, so the next two items, Tracer Lane and Energy Store just sort of combined. And, you know, my understanding with Deacon is that really this is about looking at the, the solar bylaw. What we talked about last time was following up on the SJC decision, it seemed like we wanted to reopen the, the solar bylaw and update it to reflect primarily concerns about the SJC so that it was more defensible and then to include some things that or clarify some things that if we were opening up, we had an opportunity to do. So that's what the, the last two items are. And I can share my, what I would suggest, let me see if this is the right one. Hold on one second. Yep, okay. Can you all see this?
Yeah, but.
I'm, I'll make it bigger. I just want to make sure you could see it first.
Yeah, make it bigger.
Yeah. So I think, how's that?
Keep going, bigger you can get it.
Okay, how's that?
That's good.
Okay, so I, if I can just set, set us up for like the conversation and maybe propose. So last Friday, I think it was Friday, it was Thursday, Friday, Jeff and I spoke with Donna for two hours and went through it pretty extensively. So this version reflects my understanding of what we discussed. And in terms of the color coding, the, the black text is what's currently in the solar bylaw. The green is, what we talked about last time was incorporating the energy storage elements from the bylaw that came before town meeting and failed into the solar bylaw and making it more integrative. So that's what the green is. The blue, the blue is new text. And then I highlighted some items in yellow that came out of our, the discussion with Jeff and Donna and I that seemed like they were sort of policy decisions as opposed to wording. And I mean, there's policy working with that, but it seems like those are the, the highlighted things that we need to discuss. So what I was thinking, and tell me if you guys are okay with it, I thought I could just do a quick once through for conceptual like orientation and then either we can jump into the yellow because that's more discussion or we can, the alternative was you just walk through it from top to bottom. I don't know if anyone has any strong feelings one way or the other. Jeff, do you have a thought, since you're closest to this?
I, I do, I do want to have another whack at this.
Of course.
Yeah. Not another detailed run through with edits.
Yeah.
Because Friday, even though we went right to the two hours, there, there are still many, many, many small edits that I.
Oh, yeah.
I, I didn't present because I, we were just trying to get what we could out of Donna.
Yeah, and I guess the thing I was gonna say to that point was, I think what we got out of talking to Donna on Friday was there's the, the overall package, you know, there's some policy things in yellow we have to figure out. There's little things in wordsmithing and tweaks and stuff that, you know, I know Jeff was gonna be sent, give to me, so that plus anything that comes out of this meeting, so. But I think the general sense was Donna gave us, gave sort of a thumbs up that if we wanted to work from this package, the way it sort of designed and the cons, you know, and sort of laid out, that that, that intact is okay. There's just refinements and clarifications and some changes for each of the sections that we have to discuss. But we're not throwing, like, she didn't say this, this approach doesn't work, this thing is the whole package doesn't work. She basically said what you're working with is okay, but you know, these things we have to decide as, as a planning board. So, does that, Jeff, does that reflect your?
Yeah, I, I think she was good with the, the overall concept of we take the energy storage and blend it into the solar bylaw rather than having it be a standalone thing. In so doing, we exempt the, you know, the residential and, and non-principle use type solar projects from these requirements, which, which was a problem at town meeting. So we take care of that problem. We've got it all in one bylaw now. And, and then we go and look at the Tracer Lane case and we figure out some ways to make our bylaw stronger relative to the guidance that we got from the SJC.
Yeah, agreed. So maybe, maybe I'll just walk through it and I'll, we'll stop at places that we need, people have questions for and definitely stop at the yellow. Does that work for everybody? Okay, I'll just take that as a, a yes from the people I don't see, but thank you. So my big takeaway in doing research.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm not gonna give you my dozens of little edits right now.
No, that's, yeah, yeah.
We'll do that in private.
Yeah, exactly, that's totally fine. Duly noted. So the first thing is with the use table, you know, what we had prior with energy storage is a little more complex. And the only thing that's remaining here is we've had the discussion that for energy storage that is primary use, i.e. standalone, not connected to either wind or solar, it's not gonna be allowed. So that's all this use table is saying. Prior, we had sort of more rows that referenced wind and solar. So that's the, the green there. So the, the big takeaway when I was trying to figure this out, I consulted with some people who had legal orientation knowledge and the two concepts that, well, there's a few concepts I got. One is that there's a balance just zoning generally between the interest of the town, the interest of the Commonwealth on one side and the interest of development on the other side. And so the idea with this version is to really be very explicit that we're trying to balance those two sets of interests. So there might be places where, you know, it might be that the word balance shows up or just gets, the concept sort of gets like major point. But we're trying to sort of make it multiple times that we're acknowledging that. The other big thing that came out of Tracer Lane is they reaffirmed that the only reasons that a town can regulate solar is for reasons of health, welfare and safety. And so the, the important part and the reason for the beginning is really to establish and make explicit rather than implicit how we see the zoning regulations in this bylaw contributing to the promotion of health, welfare and safety for the town. Again, acknowledging that there's a balance in there. So that resulted in this whole background section. The last thing I'd say, because I, and Donna agreed with this as well, is if we ended up having to go to court around this, if someone sued the town, what you want to have is enough documentation of what we were thinking as a planning board and as a town of Shute's Ferry. And so there's three sources that, it's the bylaw and which I hope, you know, it seems like Donna was finding that this format where it's much more explicit in terms of laying out our rationale, but the other two are, are minutes. And so Carrie, I think just going forward, at some point, we might want to put something in the minutes. It's very explicit that sort of, it's documenting what the rationale is because it's the bylaw, the minutes. And the third thing is our report to town meeting. So if we're successful in completing this process and getting it to fall town meeting in time, after the public hearing, we would have a report, which we always have to do, but frequently that's very short and abbreviated. And what Donna affirmed and these other folks I talked to affirmed was having that report be much more detailed and including the rationale. So we have three documents that basically say this is what we're thinking and why. So that's sort of just the background. So what I did here with all this blue stuff is laid out ad nauseam that there's public health, safety and welfare for Shute's Ferry residents. And that the purposes by law is to protect that. And so it goes through and we talk about potable water supply, we talked about wetlands, we talked about roads, we talked about a resilient ecosystem, we talked about forests in terms of carbon sequestration, storage. We talk about the fact that we're mostly forested and therefore there's a risk of forest fires. We talk about limited agricultural land, so we want to make sure that what we have, we can maintain. Talk about the fact that we have a small volunteer fire department, it's small police force, well, we have a volunteer fire department, small police force. So responding to emergencies is quite limited, given our town capacity. And then lastly, that the preservation of history is important, both indigenous and post contact. So, and then one of the things that Jeff has pointed out and we'll talk about later as a discussion point is in the Tracer Lane case, they made a point accurately or not, that while them only allowed large scale solar development, one to two percent of the town. And so that was one of their objections. They pointed out that it was in the Commonwealth's interest to develop solar and by having one to two percent allowed, it was going against the interests of the Commonwealth. And so this right here is talking about just sort of getting the facts in there about, you know, how big we are, what our land is like, et cetera. So that's sort of the background part of it. The purpose is essentially the same, except that more explicitly just said about, again, that ad nauseam protecting the public health, safety, welfare of Shute's Ferry residents, so that that's woven in there because we didn't have it before. So I'll stop right there. Does that all make sense to people so far? Okay. Um, so.
Yeah, that's, that's sort of what's, what's a little bit, one of the things that's different is within the bylaw itself, it, it, it may be more than you have to say and more than you would say in most bylaws, but you're, you're trying to educate a court a little bit on why you're doing what you're doing, what the background is, what's the setting, the context. And in this case, given that we're dealing with an exemption in state law, you know, we don't just have carte blanche, we, we have to deal with exemption, it's warranted to have more of this type of material in here.
Could I make?
You had a point?
Yeah, I have a comment. Can you scroll back up a little bit, Michael, to the last point about history? I guess I feel like this is one of the shortest bullets and yet we have a significant amount of the bylaw devoted to historical preservation. And I think in order to make the case that historical preservation is important for the welfare of our community, that rationale needs to be spelled out. I, I think there's a strong case to be made for community identity, cultural preservation, preservation of indigenous culture, the rights of minorities, I mean, we could go on and on, but well, it seems to me like a paragraph that explains, because a lot of what you're talking about is health and safety in terms of physical wellness or physical health, like water quality. But now we're talking about a social good or a psychological welfare variable. And I, I think it needs to be spelled out.
Well, I guess I'll say two things. One is, I mean, you and I think Henry's on the call, you know, if, if the Star Commission wants to send, you know, a sentence or two, I don't think it should be really long because the idea is sort of just bullet these things. But if, if you can come up with more compelling language, the thing that Donna had said is a bylaw doesn't only have to protect public health, welfare and safety, it can do other things. But in light of the SJC, that's the defensible part. So like the core of what we have to be able to do is make, connect the dots between our regulation and public health, welfare and safety. But, you know, if, if there's this, like, just make it a little bit bigger, you know, additional sentence or two, if there's something that, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that can, it could be another sentence. I just think that is important, is very vague and doesn't in any way tie it to health, safety and welfare. And I think you can tie it.
Okay.
So I'm happy to make some suggestions and I'm sure the Historical Commission would probably be happy to talk about it their next meeting.
Okay, and I would say just process wise, what I'm sort of assuming is I'm gonna get Jeff's, you know, edits that he's already got in the hand. If there are suggestions, whether specific or follow-ups after this meeting, I'll take all that stuff, I'll rewrite it so it's an updated version and send it out to everybody so that at our August meeting, we can review that version. If that makes. If that makes sense. So I think this is sort of like going through and collecting the fodder for that next round of edits.
Michael, I do think what Miriam's point is well taken because or I would guess that if so, if a court was going to look at that, they would say, well, how is that connected to the community's welfare? And I think Miriam, your point is well taken. We need to explicitly connect that. Answer that question if it's going to be at any way, shape or form defensible.
I will, I will, I will come up with some draft language.
Oh, great. So I'll move us on to the purpose with the exception of just sort of framing it again as public health, safety and welfare is unchanged. applicability is unchanged. And then what I did here for pretty much all the sections is I introduced each of the sections with pretty much similar language, which is basically to protect the public health, safety and welfare shoots fair residents, the following law shall be met for ground method solar. So for every section, whether it's required documents or performance standards, they're all preface by this statement. So again, this is like the ad nauseam part, but Donna sort of supported the idea that you know, better to be have it in there than not. So this is one part.
Well, do you want to? I mean, here's a do public health, safety, should that be, should that be and or or is there is? I mean, we've been using and previously.
Yeah, it should be.
Well, if if you use and it means you
Have to do all of them.
All three. If you use or it could be any of the three. So or is that?
Okay, great, great. What is this? What is the state statute? How do they phrase it?
I don't think it's in there.
No, no, no. The health. Welfare is in there.
In 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 the actual exemption?
Yeah. How do they phrase it?
I couldn't find it really quickly, I hope. Hold on. I'm not sure. I could I could find it.
Health, safety. And then they they leave out the essential comma that or welfare. But it's health, safety or welfare, health, trauma, safety or welfare. But I would put the say the comma behind the safety just to be proper.
So should we should we mirror that language in our in this bylaw?
So it looks like this, right, Jeff?
Correct, e- except the statue doesn't have a comma after safety.
Oh, I just put it in.
That's the Harvard comment. So I I I always use it. Even though I didn't, even though I didn't go there, I I try to.
Okay, well, I will amend that stuff. So the next thing I did, which is worth calling out is basically, these things have to be complying with, as we said already, local, state and federal requirements. But what I ended up doing, because there's some that sort of jump out and the idea would be that these are if they're appropriately, they should be included. So it's the Mass Endangered Species Act, the Mass Wetlands Protection Act, Mass Environmental Protection Act, Mass Forest Cutting Practices Regulations, Shoots for General Wetlands Protection Bylaw, U.S. Native Species Act and the National Historic Preservation Protection Act. So if they're relevant and they're appropriate, we're just calling them out because I think last time, you know, it's sort of like, well, which which of the many regulations out there at the local, state and federal level are appropriate? And these are the ones that sort of rise to the top that are important. If they apply, they don't always apply, but if they do, we want to see them. So that's why naming it was I put in that put that in. The dimensional stuff, there was two additions. One is that Jeff and I agreed that right now the lot size, which is currently the definition between large scale and small scale. And so those will remain in the definitions, but they got reiterated here so that they're in the body of the bylaw. The wording has not changed at all. So it's it's just sticking this in, which is this part here. And then the ESS stuff, we've noticed from this the summer in terms of distance. So does that make sense in terms of dimensional?
So Michael, you you might mention your 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 organizational changes.
Oh, okay. So one of the things that Jeff had suggested is we reorganize some of the sections, which you you might find this an easier read than the last time. There was some rejiggering. So we put dimensional higher up and we just reordered some of the blocks for easier reading. I think we've got it all, but we can revisit that if people are confused.
The problem with the last bylaw was after applicability, you launched into requirement. And then suddenly it was documents that that you had to submit. And then after documents, it was back to more requirement. So what Michael did is he put all the requirements up front in different, under different headings. And then the documents that were required for for, you know, to demonstrate compliance, those were all at the end where they belong.
Yeah. So we've got just said there's requirements and there's general requirements. There's dimensional requirement and then the need of a lot of the stuff that we've talked about previously is the mitigation requirement. So all those things to mitigate the effects are in this in this category here. So the four times land buffer for carbon sequestration in forest habitat stays the same. One of the things we can discuss, but I I think we I got the impression Jeff and I were okay with is that we took out the pollinator meadow because, you know, in my sense, pollinator meadows, it's not a very realistic goal. And the idea would be to sort of have a vibrant habitat that has native plants that's revegetated. So if you remember, when we went to the Wheelock site last year, the Concom and I think some of the planning board said it's not vegetated enough. So they receded and it was a concern. And so the idea here is that sort of jettisoning the idea of a pollinator meadow and really sort of prioritizing the fact that we have an area that's healthy and providing geological services, which minimizes erosion, promotes the growth of native plants and prevents invasive species. So if we're doing that and it's eighty percent vegetated, and then one of the things that we put in at the end here is that there'll be annual monitoring of that for the first drive, five years. And if it's not eighty percent vegetated, then that would continue. But I think what we found with Wheelock is, you know, the the first round or two of people who are operating it weren't really paying attention. And it was only when we did the site visit that we're able to sort of say, you need to do more. So this sort of gives more follow up to that. So the other big, so the next two, which is a perimeter fencing, no change, trail networks, no change. The next big part is the historic resources and properties. Miriam had suggested that you change the wording just to indigenous. So there's places where we had, I think it was Native American. We changed it to indigenous. And then what I tried to do here, the yellow is a topic of discussion, but what I tried to do here, if you all remember, it might have been a year ago, might have been eighteen months ago, the historical commission gave us two documents and recommendations in terms of the process. I think that's, yeah, in terms of how it might work if there was someone waving their hand who's a interested party saying there was historic resources. And so building that in, so it wasn't a standalone document. And then the other part here was requiring a written assessment by, we have an assessment, but making sure that it was recognized credentials. Miriam was subsequently sort of pointed out, there's actually I forget what it's called here. What's the CRIM?
Cultural Resource Management.
Yeah. So that that I just found out today and I'm thinking that since it's a term of art that's well recognized in the field, that might be something rather than just saying a written assessment, which would give more parameters to it.
So who who can perform those?
There's
Well, I think that I think that, you know, somebody who who does them and who would have recognized credentials. So often it's archaeologists or other related specialists that work for cultural resource management consultant, consultant, consultation firms.
Yeah, I looked it up today. I mean, there's, they're a thing that people deliver.
But I would also say that some TPO offices now contract with applicants to provide cultural resource management. And in fact, as folks may know, that is the case in Chutesbury with the proposed solar projects, that there is a a TPO that has contracted with them. So it doesn't have to be an archaeological firm.
So the applicant, if if they could obtain the services of a TPO could.
They could. They have. AMP has.
And so one of the things that I think we we spelled out here in this part we're looking at now is that the applicant would submit the assessment and site plans for review and comments to parties that have knowledge about this. So it'd be the Mass Historical Commission, Chutesberry Historical Commission, and then any tribal historic preservation offices or tribal councils. So basically they do this report, say, this is what we found and then put it out for comment. So that we as the fighting board both get that report, but we also get the comments. So we can understand what's, you know, where people are coming down on their opinions.
Michael, could I could I jump in here with a couple of comments?
Sure. Well, I have a question before you do.
Yeah.
There's the board one. I was thinking I could just keep walking through this and then we can come back to the yellow parts. But you want to just do the yellow parts as we logically stumble upon them? If people have a strong opinion?
Yeah, let's take them as they go.
Okay. So Miriam, why don't you jump in?
So, um, so you know, Michael shared this with me today, but before he shared it with me, I had taken a stab at recrafting the language for this section with some recommended changes that I think make it more clear and more explicit what the planning board would be looking for in the notifications that would be sent out. I think you know, spelling it out is a reasonable.
Next part. That's that's in the that's in the document, the required documentation.
Okay, okay. And we're not in the right place. And I the other piece I just would like to say is, and Michael and I talked on the phone today and had a little exchange about this, that I do not think it is appropriate to have a list of specified tribes that would be required for this notification. I think that listing the names is inappropriate and overly narrow and constrictive and unless you're going to have a really, really long list that I don't think anybody wants to have in this paragraph. And the reason why I think it's inappropriate is that I don't think that it's within the wheelhouse of the planning board or the town or even the historical commission to decide which tribes have a cultural and historical affiliation with this area. I think that it is better to to not judge that. And I think that there would be we would be opening ourselves up to complaints if we did that. And and just as a case in point, you know, if you decided, for example, okay, well, let's just pick all the federally recognized tribes in New England. Well, there's a federally recognized tribe in Wisconsin that originated in Western Massachusetts, the Stockbridge Muncie Band. Or let's say, let's not pick tribes that are only in Massachusetts. Well, you know, there are tribes in Connecticut and Rhode Island and even in New York State and even in Canada that were the repositories for refugees who left Western Massachusetts after.
There has to be an end to this though, because an applicant needs to know what they're supposed to do. And i- if it's just open ended and we can have tribes coming in and and from Wisconsin and and different places that were once here and long gone. That that's that's not the kind of 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 application process. I mean, people are going to send these things. Be open ended like that.
Jeff, let me finish. First of all, the tribe that's in Wisconsin is not long gone. They have an office in Western Massachusetts and are very active in this region. So again, this is where we want to be careful to not overstep what we know. I think that by engaging with the cultural, what I'm saying is by, you know, excuse me.
So write them down in the bylaw.
May I? May I finish my sentence?
No, I'm a board member and I can interrupt you.
Okay.
You you can.
You're asking that question.
The known tribes down. The one, the no eggs and Narragansett.
Miriam, please let Jeff finish.
Okay. Well, he's asking questions, but
I I just don't want it to be such a vague process to where these people don't know who to send it to. And 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 people can come in, tribes can come in later and say, why was I left out and hold the whole process up? I I mean, how how fungible is this list of tribes going to be? This is just Chutesbury. It's no other place. It's right here. So how many apply? There has to be a finite number. Can't we determine that?
One thing that I I came with, when I talked to Miriam today, this idea of the the CRIM, the cultural preservation resource thing is it sounds like if that's the vehicle that gets developed, that the person who's writing that has the ability to sort of do the research. Because like what I conveyed to to Miriam today is what Donna and Jeff had pointed out is that it's their interpretation was it was an undue burden for an applicant to figure out which tribes in the, you know, in the country had cultural affiliation originally to this area. It seems like if we do two things, which is we label this as the the CRIM, the Cultural Resource Protection Assessment, whatever it is, that whoever's going to do that part of their first step is to identify what the culturally affiliated tribes are. So it's not really the developer, they're just paying a contractor to do it. And the way it's currently written, what I thought was it's the best of both worlds. It's basically saying all regional federally recognized and state recognized tribes, including which is not excluding anybody, but it's sort of giving the shortlist. But it's anyway, there's this information.
Michael, can I can I make a suggestion? Suppose we made a requirement for the TPO instead of an option here and allow the TPO to define who was who should be included.
Well, there may not be a TPO at this point.
What I'm suggesting though is we require, instead of being or, we say you must have a TPO.
What, the applicant must have a TPO?
Yeah.
May I make a comment? So I don't think you want to leave it up to one consultant, whether it's an archaeologist or a TPO to decide what's meaningful or relevant for every other possible tribe. When projects are subject to federal regulations, I understand with solar projects, that may not be the case. But there are thousands of projects all across the country every year that go through this process with CRIM consultants and there are databases that they consult with in order to decide what screens they want to use for figuring out which tribes to notice. We can list tribes, but my concern is that it will invite the accusation of cherry picking or ignorance about cultural traditions. I did give Michael some suggested language, which was later in the days where he doesn't have it, where I was suggesting that tribes be noticed if they have, and I I don't I'm I'm just paraphrasing. I don't have the exact words in front of me right now, but really kind of looking at Algonquin. But really kind of looking at Algonquin language traditions culturally tied to peoples of Western Massachusetts who are Algonquin speaking, because those are the tribal communities, the cultural traditions that predated European settlement here in Western Mass. But again, not. What?
Is this it?
If you scroll down. Yeah, yeah, whatever I gave you that's in the red. Anyway, you know, you guys can look at that language or we can have a bigger conversation, maybe invite the historical commission for a joint meeting. I know there's other people here, I mean, who might want to comment on this besides me. But I just would like us to be careful that we do this in a very thoughtful way and not just say, well, we only wanted to devote one paragraph to it, so let's make it super succinct. Because that may make it problematic down the road.
If I can summarize what I'm hearing, and maybe in the interim, we can work out. On the one hand, we don't want it so broad that, you know, to Jeff's point, that at some later point in time, either a timeline or whatever, that someone's that's left out, the project has been forward. On the other hand, you don't want to have it so limited that people who have a genuine affiliation and should be consulted are not able to be consulted. Is that like, is that the balance that we're trying to figure out? How to make it manageable but inclusive?
The other concern I had is, you know, what if the names of tribes change five years from now? What if two groups that were unaffiliated decide to organize into one larger tribal entity? And they're not on this list because they've changed their name? So I think you'd want to make sure that you're not locked into something that's so narrow and concrete that it can't evolve over time.
Well, you could say successors in name and, but, you know, I understand how the fed, federal program goes because there are projects all over the country so that the tribal influences would shift depending on where you are. But this is all in Chutesbury. And it, it seems to me that a definitive list could be produced, even if it was fairly extensive, even if it was a half a dozen or whatever. At least then the applicant would know where, where to send these notices. And frankly, this is a zoning bylaw. It can say what we want it to say. If we want it to be that specific, it can be that specific. We're not in violation of any other federal or state law, and so are doing.
How about, given this, I mean, if I could sort of facilitate wording before the next meeting, maybe between with Miriam and Jeff and anyone in the Star Committee, Commission or whatever, since I can talk to you guys and not a core, but I can only really chat with Jeff. Maybe we can get to something and we'll run it by Donna, because Donna's going to probably want to see it as well. Does that make sense? Just, it feels like for this session, it's raising up the core of what the issues are, as opposed to that's, if we can't easily resolve, at least we can identify them. So if that, does that sound a reasonable way to proceed?
I think it's worth a try, Michael.
Okay. So a cruise through here, like I said, a lot of this is, the rest of the blue is about the consultation process that got outlined by the Star Commission that we discussed like a year or so ago. You know, in terms of confidentiality and things like that, but sharing the information. So that's what these subsequent paragraphs are in terms of like protecting the cultural resources, blah, blah, blah. So mitigation for energy storage is essentially this, where the green is the same. And I put in some fire standards that I was able to find. So because fire is really the concern. So one, there's a couple of new mitigation items, one's mitigation of stormwater. And this was basically stormwater runoff. So the idea of, you know, if we've got runoff, it's going to contribute to either damage in terms of water recharge, wells, erosion, flooding, and basically saying that we should, we should, the state has low-impact design and best management practices. Because this is a Massachusetts stormwater handbook. So basically raising that up. The other thing that got pointed out to me was that you want to be specific about what the benchmark is and that no, it's got the best up-to-date benchmarks because the state, in some instances, is using decades of flooding. You know, like what a hundred-year flood is, is sort of outdated. So no, it's got the best ones, putting that in there. So the idea is we didn't have specific stuff about stormwater. It was sort of woven in conceptually and it was definitely in the conditions, but not in the bylaw.
I got one, I got one question. I noticed that, that, that on the second line you use should, and then on the, on the third line you use shall.
I think I always like shall, but let's see.
Yeah, that, that, good catch, Dika. That, that should be a shall.
Okay.
Well, and then take the B out.
Shall not significantly. Cool.
And then take the ED off the increase.
Yeah. There we go.
Just the D.
Yes, yeah. Okay, this, today's the 11th, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Cool, okay. So noise, noise is something Jeff and I discussed a bunch. The idea was both during construction and then during operation, there is noise that happens, you know, Jeff was pointing out that we warn construction noise and operation noise. Operationally, if there's an energy storage, there's heating and cooling, so there's fans and things. That's probably the only noise during operation. But during construction, in the conditions where we lock, we had times. So just sort of making explicit that there's between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM, they have to comply with DEP noise regulations. So just putting it in here then allows us, if we want to do any conditioning around that.
Michael.
Yeah.
Quick question about that is, do you happen to know in the applicable state and local noise regulations, if it's well-defined, what noise is, you know?
Yeah.
As far as decibel level, that, that kind of specifics? You don't have to tell me what they are. Just assure me that they're somewhere clearly defined.
They are clearly defined. There was one point that I actually took out because Jeff and Donna pointed it out. But, and I think it just raises alarms for people. But the way DEP defines it is that if, if, if the situation arises at the, at the property line up to 10 decibels more than prior, that, that that's an issue. So there's sort of the generic, the, the, the objective level of decibels. And then there's also the increase of decibels. But the short answer is it is defined. And I, and I thought, one, because Jeff wants to keep things as short as possible and he likes citations, that we just leave it this way rather than taking what DEP says and sticking.
Yeah, no, 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 that's fine. And you have that as your topic sentence. So that applies to the whole, to the whole, all of number eight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cool.
Good question.
I've got a thing on number eight, too.
Okay.
Um, do, do we want to make it, do we want to make a, an exception to the, to the, to the days and hours with when, within which the work can be done for, for pressing circumstances? Because it seems to me that sometimes they, they, they might really have to do something on a Saturday.
Well, would it be an emergency or just be, I mean, if a contract?
That's what I'm saying. Do you want to make mention of emergency? Because that's.
I think emergency makes sense, you know, contractor convenience, I would say no, personally.
Right, right. But I mean, if, you know, if a detention pond bursts, I mean, I mean, you're going to want them there on Saturday.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think it's a good catch. I'll, I'll stick that in. So we've got mitigation for road integrity stays the same. So this is, I think, a point where Donna and Jeff sort of pointed out. So if you remember, we've got our nine districts that we came up with a few years ago. And the idea was you can cite one large-scale ground-mounted solar facility in each of the nine districts. And there's currently one that's populated with the Wheelock. I'll try to summarize Jeff's point and then you can correct me if I get it wrong. But the idea is getting back to the SJC decision. You know, the way we looked at it was pre-SJC, we were saying, you, you can build anywhere in town. And we're just outlining that there's nine. And go at it. But post-SJC, there's an increased sensitivity that we're basically saying, there's only nine places. So it sort of got turned on a 10 that, you know, we're, we could be accused of limiting where it goes in terms of particular zones. Jeff, did you get to see the language that I sent you? The alternative language?
Hmm, I, I've not been able to get back at this.
Okay.
Is that in the emails that you just sent?
I sent it a couple of days ago, but I have it because I wanted everyone, I wanted to see if we could consider it. So. Oh, hold on. Where did it go? Oh, okay. Sometimes having two screens is inconvenient. Okay, I'll make it bigger. So what I thought, because I think the point is well-taken, that, you know, we, having nine zones limiting might be an issue. So what I came up with as a concept that we might want to consider is that you can't just explicitly say you can't have more than one installation on a single parcel. And then I basically said, with a parcel being recorded at the Register of Deeds as of this past July, so, you know, a week or so ago. Or if it's newly subdivided, that there's a 10-year period, so you can't subdivide it, you know, next week and then have two lots you can build on. So the idea is we're limiting one per lot and sort of cutting off the ability to subdivide and building just out of convenience. And then the other.
One per, just to clarification, one per lot for 10 years?
No, 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 one per lot. But just say, just say, you know, like where Wheelock is, it's huge. So if they came in and said, we're going to subdivide, and now we have two lots and we're going to put two on, that they'd have to wait 10 years until after they recorded those two lots to come forward and build on both of them. You know what I mean?
So Michael, is, is this a replacement for that other language?
Yeah, yeah. As a bundle, the idea was get rid of the zones and figure out how to, you know, because the thinking behind the zones is that one, we wanted to distribute it across towns. But if you look at the first slide, it's to preserve the ecological integrity of large blocks of undeveloped land, forestland. So the idea is if we're trying to preserve large blocks of undeveloped land, the logic would be, well, you can't have more than one per lot. That just seems like a reasonable way. So you're not just putting multiple ones on a particular lot, no matter how big the lot is. The other two things that I added here, which would be interesting to get feedback on, is for the road access, that there's a distance between access points. So if you look at Wheelock, whatever it hears, it has to be 1,500 feet from the next access point. And in terms of in the backland, it has to be 250 feet between buffer areas. So you're basically forcing it to be more dispersed, which would therefore protect undeveloped forestland. So it's, you could do more than nine, which is what we have, but it would, it would force expansion. And so I, you know, I'm just throwing this out so.
So you're talking about a way to get more than one within a block?
Yeah, because I, I understood that you were thinking that having the blocks would not pass, yeah.
Right, so here's the block. And we have nine of them, one of which has got us all a four-minute already.
Yeah.
There's eight left.
Right.
So you're saying this is a way to accommodate more than one per block?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, because I understood that you were, you and Donna were both concerned that if we had nine blocks, that the SJC or, or some judge could say, you're limiting it. So the idea is.
Well, yeah, I, I, I was concerned because in the Tracer Lane case, the, the, that the court kept saying that only one and a half or 2% of the town is zoned for solar, and that's just in their industrial zone. And probably their industrial zone was, was mostly filled up with stuff anyway, so you couldn't really do a lot. And I was trying to think of arguments that we can make that we don't have an industrial zone. So you really probably could get one in each one of these eight remaining blocks.
So you think we should keep the nine? I thought you were arguing about getting, getting rid of it.
Well, no, I, I was just, I, I was, I was trying to put myself in the position of a, of a, of an attacking attorney who would be trying to show that we really only have 120 acres available on paper. 15 acres times eight, you know, 15 is our max. Then eight remaining blocks, that's 120 acres. That's less than what Wallfam had. But, but on the other hand, we actually have 120 acres that's open, right? That you, you could put something on. And 120 acres would be four more Wheelocks, which would be five times the energy that's needed by Chutesbury. So we'd be creating in green energy five times what Chutesbury uses. I'm just trying to think of different arguments to justify what we've done here. Even though it's a very small percentage of the town, could actually produce a lot of energy. And, and I, I don't think we can say all that in the bylaw, but I think we'd have to say it in our report. Maybe try to slip it into the bylaw. I, I'm not ready to, to get rid of the district quite yet.
Okay, that makes it easy.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure out ways to bolster the strength of, of saying that that's adequate.
Okay.
So.
So if, if that's the case, then I misunderstood, which makes it much easier. So I would, I would say that if we keep this, and either we put it in the minutes in the report as supporting documentation, or if there's some wording in here that we want to reinforce the concept, if you want to mess with that, let me know what it is.
Yeah.
I think, I think you're looking for a rationale, or, or at least more than one, maybe, for why this makes sense for Chutesbury.
Yeah, I mean, the opening line is ecological integrity, but I think you need a little, probably it sounds like we need a little bit more.
Well, we, we didn't want to just leave this open-ended. We wanted to put some kind of cap on, on how much could ultimately be developed. I don't think any town wants to be subjected to so much solar development. And what's the right amount? Right now, Wheelock generates what the town uses in energy, what the entire town uses. And we've got capacity for four more times that.
Yeah. All right. And there are towns like, you know, Carver in the southeast, which I think has a population of like 7,000 or 10,000. They have an excess of 10 proposals. I mean, I think more than that. So it's, it's, it's easy to get inundated.
So remind us, isn't the trace decision also based on access or, or lack of access going, crossing town line?
It was, but the court kept harping on the fact that they only had one and a half or 2% of their land zoned possible for solar. But it was just access to go to another town, to put it in another town. But I, I, I think that case kind of ticked the court off. Because they harped a lot.
Right.
And the one thing, Steve, it's sort of a detail, but it's, it's somewhat relevant, is what the court said, because Wallfam was arguing that it's just a road, it's an access road, it's not part of the solar and therefore they could regulate it. And the court said, oh, no, the access road is part and parcel of the solar installation. And therefore, it can't be regulated.
Right. No, I understand that part.
Yeah.
But it was, I mean, that was also part of the court's decision, but Jeff's right. They kept, the court kept coming back to the percentage of, of property allowable for solar.
Right. So Jeff, do you want to work on this part? Oh, Jeff Weston has a question.
I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit uncertain. Didn't Wheelock, they were given permission to put in a 15 acres and they came in much greater than 15 acres? Is that correct?
No, at the time, we did not have a bylaw with any 15-acre limit. We, we did Wheelock without a bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
So Jeff, the way we'll leave it is you'll work on it. And if one of our ideas by me, it should be. So Jeff, the way we'll leave it is you'll work on it, and if one of our ideas by me, it should be an email?
Yeah, yeah.
Cool, okay.
Yeah, and CC me on the emails, and I won't, I won't respond because of the, of the, of the open meeting law, but at least it'll keep me in the loop.
Okay, cool. So this next part is when I, when I cut Miriam off earlier and said there was the required documentations. This is another section, actually, that Donna, we were talking about, Donna made a good organizational suggestion, which is the whole notice to about indigenous sites is really pre-submission. So if you read through it, the idea is the noticing about mapped or suspect, known mapped or suspected sites has to happen before the applicant can actually submit the special permit. So I'm just going to scroll down for a sec. So you see this says required documents for special permit submission, which is B, and then we go through our whole list of stuff. And this is the one thing that's pre-submission, which just makes again, reading easier, both for us, but also for the applicant, that they need to know that before they can submit, they have to do these things. So this is mostly the same language. The two key things here is expanding the notice response state time from 35 days to 60 days. And then one thing I added was that late responses shall be provided to the planning board. So if the, if the parties don't respond by the 60 days.
Do you want to show this text to people?
Yeah.
We're still looking at the map, Michael.
Oh, sorry, sorry, hold on, yeah, I, thank you. It's always interesting what can, that didn't work, hold on. Your screen. Can you guys see it now?
Yeah.
Okay, cool, sorry about that. So here, this is what I was saying, so under required documents, this is the organizational thing again. There's required pre-submission documents, which is A. And then you scroll down to B, and there's the long list of required documents. So Donna sort of pointed out that this whole dynamic here happens before they can submit a special permit. And so the two changes, one is changing their, the, the time by which parties who are sent notices can respond, so rather than be 35 days, it's 60 days. And then what we have said in the past, which is still in place, is that a failure to respond by that period of time, the applicant can then go forward and submit the site plan. All that I added here was that late responses shall be provided to the planning board. So the idea is if someone responds after the deadline of, you know, 65 days, 75, it's just information for us. It doesn't preclude any applicant from going forward with the process, but it's not like we would say, oh, you know, we can't look at it because you sent it in late. So that's the only change here, but Miriam, did you want to comment on this earlier?
Yeah, this was where the, you can look at later, the language I sent to Michael was, I, I, I formatted this a little differently to basically frame it that the applicant would submit a cultural resource survey that includes these things as well as a narrative. Because I, I think that, you know, just having them submit a map isn't really sufficient. We want to have some analysis and some interpretation of what they think is there or is not there. And that, that should also then be, there should be some sort of project notification that is, let me back up. When we have the applicants send notifications to the Shrewsbury Historical Commission, the Mass Historical Commission, and then these various tribal entities, I think we should spell out what is, what needs to be sent to them. And so I gave you some language for what I thought needed to be included. Which would include, you know, project identification and narrative describing the project. You know, any cultural or historical resources that the applicant is aware of from their research. And then any responses that they got would be submitted to the planning board with documentation proving what they sent. They would give an exemplar of what they sent and maybe a list of who the applicant, who the parties were that they noticed and.
Yeah, well, this part here.
Things like that.
I mean, this part here, we, the planning board already would get all the information that was in the, the responses. So whatever the responses are, we, we need, I mean, we can get more explicit, but I think the idea is any parties who respond, we would get the information about those responses. But what, I think what you're clarifying is what is the content that gets notifications to that? Someone on their receiving end is oriented like.
Right, it's meaningful, it's not just like a map with no narrative, for example. There needs to be some explanation of what the project is. Well, just, you can look at the language I sent you. And, and what I did was I basically looked at the project notification forms that are used by federal agencies for Section 106. And I basically culled from that the types of information that are usually included when they send notifications out to tribes and to state historic preservation offices. So, so that's what I did, and you can look at it.
Okay, I'll check it out, thank you.
Mi- Michael, one other suggestion, when you, when you add what Miriam was talking about, you might add it a, a phrase to the topic, to the first sentence. So it's not just mapped or suspected, or, you know, end of report.
Yeah. So it really should add up here, okay?
Yeah. I, I mean, you can go into more detail later on, but I think it needs to be part of that first umbrella sentence.
Okay.
Yeah, the way I, the way I wrote it was that they would submit a report that includes those things.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, okay, I'll look at it, Miriam, and I'll, I'll work on it. Thank you. So here's the.
I'm helpful.
So once they get to submitting, these next things are the special per- requirements, I'm going to go over the, skip over the yellow for a second and come back in a minute, Jeff. But so the site plan, we already acquired a lot of the things. We had, I just sort of expanded upon it, but I added new things. So, you know, the site plan would have surface water resources, it would have location of habitat of potential and statewide importance, which is the biomap stuff. It would have the Mass and Dangerous Species Act locations. So you are just getting some limited stuff, it was actually being more informative. Veget- vegetative planting, stormwater management elements, some of the stuff they put in there, but just sort of require it. The blueprints are the same, the general documentation's same. Financial security is the same, utility notification is mostly the same. Just saying that they needed a sign off before it can go into operation. Liability, there was an ESS component in terms of liability in terms of potential fires, explosions, and water contamination. So it's, it's more than just a general liability we originally thought about. I'll come back to compliance, but it's, it's a list of a lot of the same stuff we required. So this is a big discussion point, and so it gets back to the, you know, what Jeff had raised earlier in terms of the concern about the SJC. And I sent you all a list that can bring it up for this conversation as well, or just explaining it. But the idea is, right now, we're not we're prohibiting them from building in biomap two areas. Biomap is sort of its umbrella. There was biomap one, the original biomap, and then there's biomap two, which is an updated one. And within biomap, there's two different categories of, of land. There's core habitat, which is at least for our town, less acreage, and then there's critical natural landscapes. And so Jeff's concern, and I'll hand it up in a sec, is that if we do critical natural landscapes, we take out of play a lot of land which may open us up to critique by the court. So while he's talking, I'll bring up the map just for a visual. So you're on, Jeff.
You assume I have something to say?
Well, I, I think you would, right?
I do. I, I think we ought to go through the categories, our, our prohibited categories. No matter what they happen to be, and there's a number of them. And just determine whether or not on its face, we have what amounts to a prohibition. And I'm thinking, again, in terms of this Tracer Lane case, that repeatedly was, was faulting that town for having so little land available. I know the biomap two natural landscape inventory, whatever it's called.
It's the light green, it's opposed to the dark green.
Yeah. It, it, it pretty much involves all of our, our eight remaining areas. So on its face, a solar project is prohibited in all those areas, that's 82% of the town. You could get a waiver, so you'd have to have a special permit for the project itself, and then you'd have to go seek a waiver right off the bat to, to waive this prohibition. And I don't know. I, I was thinking that what we'd be doing here is we'd be, would be being responsive to Tracer Lane. We've added a lot more requirements and a lot more detail in here. What I think we need to do a little more of is be responsive to Tracer Lane and the court's sensitivity. So I would, I would recommend we take out that 82% category. Leave some of the others, like the core habitat, that's, that's about 12% of the town. Smaller subset area.
That's the dark green.
Yeah. Leave some of, of those more sensitive areas, but don't, don't keep that broad brush category that takes out just about everything. That's a nod that we can make to that court case, that I think will, will end up helping us. In the end, so.
People have thoughts, this is definitely a discussion point we should delve into. No thoughts?
I think we're just, where, I think we're just getting worn down.
Oh my goodness, okay. Well, it's, this is a big one, I think, because, I mean, it, it, it definitely changes. If you look at this map, which there's another one I sent you a link for, but this is, this is actually in the conference room at Town Hall. We have a big old map of this. So the light green is the critical natural landscapes, which is what Jeff was suggesting we would remove from the prohibitions, and we would just keep the, the dark green, which is the core habitat. So you can see it, you know, this is, and it doesn't mean that they, you know, we still have things like slope and access to wetlands and a whole bunch of other stuff that limits it. But you know, it is true that if we took these away, it would take away probably an argument from a developer that we were restricting too much.
That, that there are, there are all kinds of other criteria that can be applied to these projects to, to limit them or even make them non-viable. But that's not necessarily known upfront, you don't know what land's going to come in as a proposal. But here, right in your face, you have 82% that, that you take off the table right away. And I, 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 I think that's, that's too much of a facial affront to that, that court case. There are other ways we can, we can certainly regulate them, but probably not in so bold a fashion as this.
But, but Jeff, don't these two different types of areas conform with our definition earlier of ecological integrity and welfare?
Oh yeah, I mean, we've had these categories in there. Sure.
Yeah, and there's, I mean, the point that I had made when we were talking to Donna was that both of these categories are by definition in this, in the Commonwealth's interest, because they say they're important to the Commonwealth. Donna sort of pushed back and said, well, solar is also an interest of the Commonwealth, so you have two competing interests in the Commonwealth, so you can push the argument. But it's still, it's still a debate, I think. Because I was thinking, well, if the state goes, went through and provided these maps and did all this research and said these are important places, we are on solid ground to protect them. But Donna was, you know, there is the the whole wrote 250 road map and the solar prioritization, so they're, the state's sending conflicting messages, basically. And the little towns are in the middle.
Could I ask a question?
Ashley had her hand up, she, she's not been speaking much.
Okay, I'm wondering, is it at all possible to create any particular stipulations for developing within the biomap zone? If it's going to be open, if we're going to make that change, is there is there anything that could make the provision of 15 acres, for example, stronger in that particular area? I don't know, like some way to, to make development in the biozone perhaps more accountable to the bylaws or just somehow different from development in the critical habitat zone?
That's an interesting idea, I think.
Just a thought.
Jeff, do you have thoughts? The interesting thing, getting to, just to jump in, I don't know if you guys can read this, but this is the definition for the critical natural landscape. It says to identify and prioritize intact landscapes in Massachusetts that are better able to support ecological processes and disturbance regimes in a wide array of species and habitats over a long timeframe. So they're, they're basically identifying things that we've said contribute to the public health, welfare, and safety.
Yeah, well, yeah, they're, they're, they're often defined by large forest blocks. And that's what we are. We're large forest blocks, and those are our blocks. Those, you know, those are our nine blocks, they're all large forest blocks, and that's what that's what the biomap natural heritage landscape is.
Could I, could I ask a question?
Please.
So we're talking about, and, and this came up with Tracer, the idea of how much land is capable of being developed in a given town, what percentage of land? And, and you're kind of looking at, at the biomap impact. And one of the other questions I have is right now, any solar projects that come before the planning board are falling under the existing zoning. And once we, and since the solar bylaw was passed, a significant portion of Shrewsbury has gone into, and I, what I believe is permanent, irreversible preservation status. A bunch of, of, of land that could have been developed for solar. Have you looked at what is remaining now in terms of the percentage of land in Shrewsbury that could potentially be developed for large scale solar? Taking into account areas that are now permanently preserved and could not be developed?
And you were thinking about like the Paul Jones up here, and then the 2,000 acres down here.
It's like several thousand acres that now couldn't be developed. And whether that, in some ways, changes the equation, like would a judge look at what it is now and what is capable of being developed? And, and kind of shrink that pie because there's these big parcels now that can't be developed? And say to the town, what are you doing to allow solar with that now shrunk pie? Is that clear?
In other words, they would say, well, so much has been preserved, you shouldn't mind a little solar.
Right, or they're saying, you know, we would say possibly that, you know, those, the development rights being sold for those properties can't be factored in as mitigation because those events took place prior to the application. But once you change the zoning and those things are already done deeds, you know, they become part of the landscape.
Well, are, are you talking about the four to one ratio?
The four to one ratio and just the, the argument. The four to one ratio and just the the argument about how much land is being permitted for development. Like, you know, if let's say, you know, I don't even know what what the acreage is. I don't know what percentages we're talking about, but if the. You know, that's why I'm just saying, if there's less right now that is capable of being developed because it's been put in, you know. Other statuses that can't be. Reversed, you can reverse chapter sixty-one, but you can't reverse selling your development rights. Or I don't know about state forests, what the status would be in the DCR land. I imagine some of that can't be developed either. So that's just a question I had of like looking at that and taking that into account.
Well, is the DCR land and like the tracks, and I think that that Miriam was talking about like Brushy Mountain, for example. Are they part of the equation right now, Jeff, in your figuring?
Well, if if they're if they're under conservation restriction or APR or something, no, they can't be a solar farm.
So I I guess.
Nor can can those lands be counted in the four to one ratio.
Yeah, I think.
That we require. I mean, th- those sound like the arguments that are on Cindy's poster that she has around town, you know, about the five thousand acres conserves and. How about a little solar? But, you know, if you if you just look at this map of what we've done is we've. Through our zoning, we've pushed it back from the roads. Has to be back five hundred feet from the roads. So we pushed it into the backland. We pushed it into the biocore natural. Landscape. Through our own zoning, we pushed it into an area where we say you can't do it. And I just. I just, I I I think I think we need to change that policy. We can regulate these things in many, many, many ways, but.
I see.
Probably not, not so, so in your face.
Right, I mean. I I I under if I understand what you're saying, we can't say those properties are off limits. To solar, or at least at least both of those categories of 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 land are off are off limits.
I I I think the core habitat, which is twelve percent of the town. That that I believe is a a subset of. And 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 that's a more concentrated protected area. There may be a few others, too, that could be identified. That are not quite so, that are not eighty-two percent of the town that are left.
I gotta say, I like Ash's idea. I mean, I I won't. I'd be up for just trying to think about it, so. I think the the short version of it would be. Given all the things that we've laid out about the importance of protecting forests. And acknowledging the fact that on the face, we have to be allowing a decent percentage of town. That have access for development, that in this particular place where the state says it's important, the critical natural landscape. There's some higher bar that kicks in, and I'm not quite sure what the higher bar is, but it basically says. To your point, Jeff, you can still do it, but because this is a little extra important, there's a little some twist. You know, that you're adding to it. So I don't know what those are, but I think it's a very interesting idea.
Well, my way of defending this bylaws. In in years past, when we've been criticized about the bio. I I know the town administrator has been critical of this bylaw for that reason. And and my response has always been, well, we could entertain a waiver for cause. So there is an avenue to build solar within the biomap to critical natural landscape. It's through the waiver process. After tracer lane, I get a little nervous just. Saying, oh, yeah, you can you can try for a waiver. Maybe we need something that indicates that a waiver, you know, would be would be entertained and we would look at it.
It's a pro it's a positive statement as opposed to a prohibitive statement.
Right, because the polygons are so big and they include all kinds of land in there. Some of it's more sensitive than others.
I I wonder too. For environmental reasons, is is that five hundred foot setback from the road necessarily something that that's what that's a good idea?
That was that was to keep it away from roadways and away from most people's houses.
Right, but I mean, are there circumstances where where the. Where we might not want the five hundred feet? I mean, that it would open up some more land closer to the road. I mean, and and keep it away from more sensitive areas.
Again, the the waiver would be possible would be a possibility, you know, in general. Development lines the roadside in Schutzbury. That's where people have all their homes. That's where they drive around and 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 look at things and. You know, for the most part, we wanted to keep it away from from those areas.
Yeah, I'm just I'm just noting that that's that's not necessarily. Pro environment.
Yeah, right, but but we didn't have the 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 sharp enough scalpel to figure out where. We could and where we couldn't do that.
Yeah, so I would say just.
Well, I'd like to I'd like to put in my two cents. I don't, I personally don't think that. All tr- all the towns should necessarily be treated with the same requirements. Certainly. We have a very unique situation here where we have large tracts of. Of of land that allow for animal migration and and we have a special place here, so. The requirements for Schutzbury, I don't think necessarily have to match the requirements for Waltham or Gardner or Fitchburg, for example. Why should we eliminate and areas that are very unique and cannot be replaced? And why should we have the same requirements that other towns have that are less that are more developed? So that's my two cents in terms of realizing, my personal feeling is that. We are not obligated to follow anyone else's wishes. We can. We can look at our unique situation and save the large blocks of land that we have for. For the animals and fauna and also which allows. We get our water through natural filtration. It also protects our water supply. So anyway, that's my two cents.
And I think, I mean, that's a lot of the the argument of what we've been making and Donna, you know, Donna did acknowledge that Schutzbury is not Waltham. You know, and it is important to sort of acknowledge that, so I think the the struggle is. Trying to be as responsive and defensive. You know, I think we're on the same page about what we'd like, but then the SJC just sort of stuck its foot in the, you know, in the puddle and disrupted everything. So trying to figure that out. So I would say just, you know, given that I do remember that Steve said he was feeling worn out. That if you all have thoughts about this stuff, just email me separately, so it's compliant with open meeting law and. Like, you know, I like I said at the beginning, the idea would be to sort of take all the ideas in the conversation and rework something, and then we just revisit it at the August meeting. But if I can, just to sort of, I want to just finish up before everyone rocks to the floor, if that's okay. So let's see, so these are all the other requirements. That I mentioned is proof of compliance, which is new, but it's basically saying that it has to comply with. Local, state and federal permitting and calls out the same things that were mentioned earlier, so. If it has to comply with any of these things, we just want proof that it did comply as opposed to guessing. There's, this is the noise is. Something else, so there was. What I suggested is that there's a noise assessment done by a qualified professional, so that. As part of the application, someone has looked at and said, this is what we anticipate the noise, and it's just. It's gathering information for us as opposed to sort of just taking them at their word and guessing. So that was, you know, since we have a noise part earlier, that we just want to make sure that what they would anticipate. Would fit what's going to happen. The other, I think this was the last big, like, discussion point is. I put hydro assessment, because my sense is just from all the current discussions. Having data about what might be expected about hydrology is important. I edited it based on some of Donna's feedback, so the idea here is the the assessment would look towards the functionality, so. What construction and operation, what kind of impacts that have on water quality? Water volume and storage, drinking water and well recharge. So those are the things that we would be concerned about and basically asking them. To submit a report. By someone who's licensed to do this work, to say what they anticipated is, so in my mind. That was gathering data that. Did come up in Wheelock, but we didn't have it in the bylaw. And I think Jeff has a different perspective, so I don't know, Jeff, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I don't want to get a big argument going. I think this is excessive, given the requirements that we have in place for these things. I also don't believe hydrogeologists are licensed in Massachusetts. At at least I researched that at one point. On another matter, I don't think they're licensed. You have licensed site professionals. LSPs, so I don't know, we want to, if we're going to ask for a licensed type of geologist, we need to find out. If if there are any in Massachusetts or what other credentials is what you're looking for. But I I I, you know. Bear in mind, there is a a state exemption. It says you can't prohibit these things and you can't unreasonably regulate them. At some point, when when tons and tons of requirements and costly. Costly studies and professionals are required, their regulations can become unreasonable, and that's. You know, that's what the court is supposed to guard against, unreasonable regulation or prohibitory reg- regulation. My concern about the the biomap two with the prohibition, my concern here would be the unreasonable regulation. So that's my comment.
Okay, anyone else want to chime in on this one? Okay, so I think this is the last big discussion point. Steve, did we weigh you out yet?
What's that?
So, well, if it's, I.
Can you say qualified?
Sure.
If if what Jeff says is true, not that I have a reason to doubt you, Jeff, about that, but.
I guess the issue is we want to get data about it, I mean, because I think. Tell me if I'm wrong, Jeff. I mean, if you didn't see, if you didn't think it was could be interpreted as as piling on. And therefore, too many requirements for reports, the data, having the data is okay. It's more the interpretation of does this get to be too much?
Yeah, I I mean, if if this was in a, if this was in a well-recharged area to a public drinking water well. Then I might feel differently. But we're talking about things in the middle of the woods with widely dispersed houses. Far away, we've got all kinds of environmental standards that we impose on these to make sure. Groundwater is not is not affected. I think I think the need for this kind of assessment in our setting is. Is pretty low. Versus other settings where it 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 might be much more appropriate.
So can we could we make it, instead of putting it in the bylaw? Just make we can keep it as a consideration for a condition?
Well, that was my, I mean, my thought was, you know, if we had something in front of us. I would want to put it a condition and sort of got me thinking, well, if it's going to be a condition, you know, or if we it might be a condition. Wouldn't you want to put it here? And I I mean, for me, just listening to the discussions about Montague Road where. There's lots of discussion about, you know, water wells, and then Pratt Corner, you know, when we did a site visit, you know, and there was the flooding. Knowing as best one could know, how they're anticipating the water flow to impact these things seems like it's worthwhile. I I sort of, I mean, my personal sense is I'd like to. I would risk getting this data and having someone say this is unreasonable. Because all they have to do is write a check, and they're still making lots of money off of these projects. So they're not doing the work. They're just paying someone else to do the work, but we get the data.
Steve, having having it as a condition, I think, would be would be a little too late, you know, the project is 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 approved and. You know, all all the way this reads, all they do is hire somebody to say it doesn't have any effect. Boom, it's over. But if if not saying I support it, but if this was a part of the permit submission. Then we could also have a. A a a higher consultant that works for us, paid for by them, evaluate the work. And then there could be some discussion around it, so. If if we're going to require it, require it, it it should be in the application.
Okay, well, why don't I think, like I said, the goal was just to raise up the things that were, you know, issues, so I think this this remains unresolved. Something that can be either jettisoned or keep, but we can discuss it next time. And then I think we're getting towards towards the end of any of the changes.
Mike, one other. I I know you're aware of this, but it is consistent, again, with with public welfare.
Oh, totally, yeah.
So I there is a a sal- a solid reason to keep it in, I mean. Whether it looks like it's piling on or not, that's a different issue.
Yeah, no, I that that was my thinking. So all this green stuff is just the stuff we've seen in terms of energy storage. And now we're into designer performance standards, so there's lighting. The only change here, which of note is that we said there's no permanently fixed exterior lighting, and we put including construction. So that they don't just have stuff there. Environmental safety standards. We added least even emergency management, no big deal. The green is the energy storage stuff we talked about. So this was, we talked about. We had a little bit of discussions on it, Jeff and I, about environmental monitor, and the idea was we have all this stuff about erosion and stormwater and things.
Took out the open-endedness, right?
Yes, yeah, I don't think they saw that. That's what I was trying to figure out, like originally was written to be for the for the life of. The project that would have environmental monitor. What we changed it to be is that after significant weather events. The planning board could. Basically require an environmental monitor to report to the planning board on erosion and stormwater impact. So, you know, if there's a hurricane, lots of rain, whatever. Rather than, you know, Jeff going out and and looking at it, that we just have something built in where we have someone who can. You know, credentials who can report back, but it would basically be on an episodic basis. But it gives us information, because I think in the past we've had conversations about. Do we know, you know, there's more erosion because it's something that something happened.
How about a how about an apostrophe in applicants?
Here?
Yeah.
Sure, Deacon, because you asked so nicely.
Come on, this whole meeting, Deacon's asked for one apostrophe. We could give it to him.
Of course we can. So so. Let's see, what is this?
That's what we were talking about before.
Yeah, yeah, this is the whole. I was going to highlight that yellow, so that that was that discussion. Want to make it yellow, sorry, here we go. Energy storage is all this new stuff that, but it's what from before. Annual reporting, we just added ESS related stuff. And then abandonment, I think Donna had wanted to define these things as discontinued operations, just to make it more clear. And we are at the end. So. Thank you for your determined. So I guess, given all that we talked about it, is it correct to say that generally speaking? The the large package that we looked at sort of hold water and that there's some key things we have to sort of figure out in the interim before. All special town meetings, but we're sort of going in the right direction. Cool, okay, so. I my sense exchanging emails with Rita was we won't have a special town meeting. Before the middle of September, so probably between the middle of September, middle of October. It sounds like we're definitely going to have one for the school route, so. My thought is, if you all send me ideas and I work on it, like, you know, Ashley sent me something and Jeff sent me something. I can retool it. We're meeting, and our next meeting is. August eighth.
That's our that's our next scheduled meeting, but one one thing I would say is that this business with the this business with the A and R. I mean, I mean, I will talk. this business with the, this business with the A and R, I mean, I mean, I will talk to people, but it, it seems to me that we may very well want to get that done quickly.
Okay.
I don't know. I mean, depending on what people say.
Well, whenever, whenever we meet, I think, you know, it's before or at August 8th, I'll have, I'll have an updated version. I think we'll have edits that are easy to just, you know, like Jeff sends me his, his stuff. I don't think that's going to be a big deal. We'll probably have some things to resolve that are big issues, but the idea is to shrink those. To get, because we still have to have a hearing and get it on the warrant and all that kind of stuff. But thank you all for this. I think we're
Okay, so, so we'll consider this, this part of the agenda done. Okay, so is there anything left to say about anything, unanticipated business, whatever?
I, I did talk to Grace today who said that I think the Senate, the Massachusetts Senate said that one thing versus the House, another thing versus meeting online and hybrid meetings. So there's some dispute in terms of whether we can continue to meet online or whether we need to do a hybrid model or what the story is. So I'm just throwing that out because of that conversation I had with Grace today.
Yeah, actually, I, I met with her after, because I got, I did my swearing in a little after you did. And just to put a finer point on it, right now, if, if the legislature doesn't take action as of July 15th, we all have to go into in-person meetings. So that's, that's the, the law, the way it's leading up to things. The Senate and the House have next week, prior to July 15th, to come up with a conference agreement. They both pass something. Surprise, surprise, they don't agree. And they get to the governor. So if we meet for a special meeting or at the A and R, and they don't do anything, we might have to meet in person, but it remains to be seen.
I'd like to say as a first time member here, I just want to appreciate Jeff, Lacy, thank you so much for your input and a lot of your work and Michael and, and Deacon. I'm really impressed with the the dedication, knowledge and intelligence and kindness and everything. It's been a really pleasure to be here this first time. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's, it's very nice of you to, to be so flattering.
Well, it's true. I've been, as a teacher for 37 years, I've been to many non-functional meetings. And this was really functional and civil and people got to express what they felt. And I really appreciate the atmosphere here. And what can I say? It's a pleasure to be a part of, part of this team. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll se- I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? I'll call the roll. Jeff, Jeff Lacy.
Hi.
Jeff Weston.
Yeah.
Michael DeCaro.
Hi.
Nathan. I, I'm an I. Any, did I miss anybody? We're adjourned.
You got it, huh?
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Excuse me. Bye-bye.